I'd like to welcome our newest board member, Crystal. This is first meeting behind the table so to speak, so if they've created a lot of teeth in work and their curdies and other things, so. I'd like to move on to resolutions and recognitions.
Wonderful, we have no resolutions or recognitions at this time. We'll move on to just the consent agenda. Board members, in your practice, you have five minutes. We're at a board meeting on September 21st, 2016, and you'll have five minutes with the end of budget carrying as well. In fact, we received a budget in finance reports. It's a review of the district financial information, three monthly financial reports, and summary accounts. And the third part of the consent agenda is the personnel report for the district.
We have no professional employees being added this month, but we did have one support staff member, Dre Lotzall, supervisor A at the high school, was added to our team.
How will you put the consent agenda?
Second.
Question and second, no votes in favor?
Aye.
Against? Moving on to reports.
Wonderful, just a few items we have in the superintendent notes. First, I wanted to show you a handout that you should receive. If not, it's coming around. Kristen, for right here, the handout for the ACT.
Oh, Quinn Island.
She's also shared with the board.
So, what's coming around, and this is very similar to the email that went out from the entire district today, celebrating the and recognizing the ACT score that the high school last year's juniors achieved. And there's also a press release that went out, and I'm going to refer to Kristen Oles and Dr. Linder about the highlights from this handout.
So, last board meeting, I updated on the assessments in the district and what we anticipated, a release date of the state ranking of ACT data. So, we had our data about how to be measured within our state. And then also the release to advise-public was all of our state assessment data. So, that would be our forward exam for our grades three through eight and 10, and then our DLM for students with cognitive disabilities, and then ACT and ACT work keys from our junior assessment of last spring. So, those are current seniors. So, we are very pleased with the results. This year, our composite score brought us in as number one in Nozaki County in the composite score, and in English science and math, and a number two in the county in writing. So, we're very, very proud of these results. Another point of pride is that when we look at, in the whole state, our composite score ranks number three in all of the public non-charter schools. So, that's very exciting. So, on this report here, you'll see the sub-scores and the subject areas. Then on the back, I didn't include for you our results compared to last year. So, these are the only two years of data that we can compare, because remember, our state assessment is the ACT given to our whole population of juniors, and this is only the second year of results from that. So, if you take a look at those, our scores have gone up in most areas. The one piece with the asterisk is the writing score. That looks like we really improved from a seven to a 20. But what has happened is the ACT writing assessment was scored out of 12 points, and that was confusing. So, the ACT decided that they would go to the 36-point score like all of the other subject areas. They've now decided to go back to 12. So, we'll have some interesting fluctuation there again in the coming year. So, we are very pleased and excited to see these results and know that it's really a combined effort of our families, our parents, our students, and our staff, K-12, not just high school, but high school, great job.
Questions or comments for board members?
I have a question. With the rating going from 12 to 36, if you just multiply it by three, is that going to get closer to the way they score?
No, it's scored differently also. The 12 was scored holistically. Two raters scored on a six-point scale, and it was added together. The 36 was scored in areas contributing to a score and then multiplied. For this new year, it will be another different way. Four areas added, scored, averaged.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just like to comment on the state rankings too. For each of these, on the back page, is insightful, because it looks like we've moved up pretty dramatically in a number of areas. Just getting on to say one, where last year we were fifth or fourth, which is wonderful, but to see we've moved up to third, second, second, third, eighth, and somewhere in there. So, we have a fair amount of staff who tonight, I'd really like to congratulate them on their hard work and efforts, and it's true because of you that we see these results. It's wonderful to see. Thank you.
I was going to say something similar, so I will just say I echo your thought. And thank you to all of our educators and our parents for contributing to this great success.
Excellent. Thank you, Kristen. The next item on the district superintendent notes, staff and parent surveys. Trying to give an update to the board. This week, the district's teams, district leadership teams included our presentations to all of the buildings regarding these staff and parent surveys that we will deploy in November 2nd through 14th. We're excited to be at the state, we're asking for input and feedback from our staff and parents. It's a satisfaction survey that's going to be deployed. It's a confidential survey that parents will receive a code in an email, and they'll get to complete the survey, which is between five and 15 minutes to complete, depending if they had comments or not. And the staff will complete the survey during that same window, November 2nd through the 14th. Areas that are going to be all looked at for the staff, we're looking at change rankings, student achievement, engagement, communication culture, work environment, and very similar areas to the parents. We're excited to be at this position where we can ask for feedback and input from the parents and staff, so it's going to help us develop goals as a district, help create a strategic plan, and allow us to stay on that trajectory of success. Once the handles are closed, we'll get the results back, and we can analyze those and bring them back to the board of those areas where they have celebration and those areas that are where they need to continue to focus on. Any further comments from our administrative teams who are part of that process? We did present the information to the communications committee of the board, and there were some questions at that time, and we have addressed those questions, and we're comfortable with the implementation that we're going to do this on.
Can we just add one thing, though? It's one per family, so we hope we don't cause problems to families when mom and dad don't agree on it.
Yeah, we did discuss that even at a further length, and we don't want to cause any problems to the husbands and wives, so we actually figured out a way that we can administer two surveys per family. So, if they're a complete household, then a survey will be sent to each of us, also knows who had an email in the system. So, we don't want to be accused of creating a conflict.
Yeah, I'm a domestic.
Any questions regarding that, further questions? So, I'd like to thank the communications committee of the board for the work and the administrative teams. It's taken us about 12 months to get to this point of adding the questions, and it's certainly a solid process. Colin and Karen, Karen, I'm the officer, and I've done about two minutes of work behind the scenes since we got to this point, and we're thrilled to be on the site, and now offering surveys to our parents and staff this year, and next year we'll deploy a student survey to get on rotation. Thank you. The next item on the superintendent notes, it's teaching and learning, and this year we're going to continue with presentations. We'll start with student services presentation, and then next month, we'll have more than schools present, and we'll look through school presentations throughout the year, and we'll wrap up with CNI and student services again. So, we're thrilled to have Ted and here to introduce some of the staff from us on this presentation.
Great, and a brief PowerPoint, so we'll not clear up here.
So, last time I was here in the spring, we talked about a realignment of some of our practices and processes, structural practice and process for kids who, I always kind of refer them as kids in the margin, because sometimes those are kids that need something a little different. Those were our special education students, I was here with Angela Little talking about how we are redesigning her special education program at Thorson. We're going to continue that kind of talk and presentation around how we are reaching those students who need something a little different at this time, a little bit different with our gifted and talented students. Again, kind of referring to kids in the margin, because sometimes they get lost out there because they don't need something that they fit that exact, both of how we do it in English center schools sometimes, so we pay attention a little differently. So, I have tonight with me Katie Ramos and Steph Emmer from Westmore, we're going to talk about math workshop, and how we're meeting some of those needs for those students who need enrichment acceleration in mathematics. And we're going to continue our theme with access, quality, coherence. We started that last year with our K-4 program. Like, and let's really, really, it's how we kind of push this with that, how we help kids access the curriculum in a quality way, and like, coherently aligning things so that they move from between the grades and the buildings, how we're making sure that we're not losing track of those specific needs of students. So, that's what we're going to continue with. Just so those that aren't familiar, we talk in acronyms and different, and we go sometime to school, the math workshop is a, these have a behind, we'll talk a little bit more about it, but it's a different delivery model within math. Us that have received kind of traditional mathematics instruction, very linear textbook type of instruction, they use some of that, but it's got a different look and a different feel. And so, what they do with this is they can able to kind of personalize some of the learning for our students who've got some of those accelerated needs. And so, when you work in small groups and different models, you can kind of get to those needs. And that really is our goal, is to maximize student engagement. So, these guys will talk about it, and I'll turn it over now.
Okay, so I teach fifth grade at Muslaun, and the end of last year, I think it was, I was starting to think about a workshop model. We do readers workshop, we do writers workshop, we do word study groups, and so math was kind of left. So, knowing what my maths looked like, I was kind of doing a whole group instruction, and if that kid finished quickly, and that kid finished quickly, and that one, I would send more there with a harder problem. That was kind of differentiation in my classroom, and I just knew something else could happen. So, I started to read about workshop and hear about it, and so I said to Katie, "This is my summer job. I'm going to try to figure this out," and then it just kind of happened at Muslaun. So, I didn't have a lot of work to do. Katie helped us along, and so it started in my classroom pretty early on. I thought I'm going to get right into it. I'm not going to start with a whole group, they're just going to know that this is workshop right off the bat. So, it's a lot of pre-assessment, so I can see what kids know and what kids don't know. And I make three groups, and they go through three rotations, but I only do two groups per day. So, there is always one group who doesn't get teacher instruction, they do the other two, and then the very next day, they start with me. So, it just goes through three stations around my classroom. One of them is a technology station, and Mobimax is the program we're using, provided by the district, and it's progress monickered, and it's at their level, and also differentiated. Another station is what I call the skill station, and that's where they have a project to do, or an activity, or a game that is focused on the skill that they're doing in workshop at that time. The third rotation is then the teacher station, which is when I get them for 30 minutes, and we're going through the curriculum, or things in Mobimax that the reports tell me the kids are not getting yet. So, I have a lot of students who don't have foundation. Mobimax has pretty much shown me what they're missing. So, I'm trying to plug the holes so that they can get up to the fifth grade curriculum, and it'll be a little bit easier for them. Every day starts with a 10 to 15-minute launch. That's my whole group. So, because I work better when things are kind of on a schedule, Mondays, I have a certain activity estimation. Tuesdays is a picture, and they either have to do eye notice or create a word problem from a picture. I have tablets with a certain number, and they have to write an equation. We've learned order of operations now, so we're using parentheses and things. Thursdays, right now, is an activity called Always Sometimes or Never, and Fridays is always a real life problem. So, like, my homecoming Friday, we had a football game story problem, so. So, we have a launch activity for all of you to do, kind of what happens. So, this comes from.
Totally, totally.
This is the new map, right?
I used to do it just for you.
So, this is.
Do you turn on the camera?
So, this is an estimation activity, and there's an entire site. Oh, I think you were showing, yes, go back a little bit.
That's it, help us out.
Yeah.
Give us a hand.
So, up at the top, there we go. All right, so it says, "How many small bases will it take to fill the latte space?" We talk about too low, too high, just right, and then they have to do a math reasoning, where they have to have their vocabulary, they have to circle the math words that they use so they stand out. And then we talk about how to come up with your estimate. So, does anybody want to take a guess of how many of those? And of course, we talk about how you use the soda can as your guide. So, how many small bases, how many small bases fill the latte space?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Twenty-six on the base, forty-four.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Is that too high or too low, or are you guessing?
Eight.
Eight.
Ten's too low.
Ten's too low. Yeah, we get everybody's guesses and their reasons, and like, one girl said to me, "I kind of cut it in half, and then I did what I thought would fill a half, but the top wasn't quite as big as, you know." So, they just are starting to think about all of this stuff and sharing, and then the answer is always on there, so there you can go down, and we always like to see what the real answer is. Always brings some good conversations to answers, and all the nerves that come.
Wait, can I sign off for your course?
It always brings great discussion. We have a lot of fun with our launches and our warm-ups, and so that's all group, and it's amazing, you know, how, what I love is the kids who struggle with math need to hear the explanations and the reasonings of kids who love math and get excited about math, and hopefully they mix it, they go a little bit. This is what it looks like in my classroom. This is how, after the launch, they need to find their name, and my groups are changing all the time, because I do lots of things that passes after I have an activity or a skill that I think, "Okay, I hope everyone knows it." They have to do a quick problem or something, usually before the class is over. Usually I'm a little posted, know if that's all it is, and I'll take them, knows it, not quite, no idea, knows it. And then the next day, my groups are all shuffled again, so I can go back and hit it again for those who need it, and then move on for other kids. And so, this is what my classroom looked like at the beginning of the year and what it looks like now. I do have ball chairs, as we call them, and a huge thanks to Cedar River Physical Therapy that helped me get those into my classroom. And we started out the year with individual desks, and then I went to Katie and said, "My workshop models would go a lot better, I think, if we had tables, and they felt like a group, like a station." And so, we got rid of the desks and put tables there, and that's how we're working. In the very left-hand side of that top picture is the teacher station, so I just work off of a little whiteboard in the back, and I have the kids right there in front of me. And then there are two other parts of the room that are the other two stations. It's just some pictures of. At the skill station, I always have the activity choices. They should not need to see me, the directions are there. They're usually self-correcting, so somehow the answers are worked into the station, so they know right then and there if they have the problem right or not. They get to work with partners, small group in that. And then the Mobimax station is, they use their Chromebooks and have a separate notebook for that. They must show their work every day, what they're doing in Mobimax.
So, when they're doing the technology and skill pieces, they're independent of you, or do you have aid there?
I got an aide for a half an hour of my then workshop time.
So, how does that work? Do they, do they help each other sometimes, or is there conversation?
We're still working on independence a little bit, so.
Right.
The Chromebooks, I can see what they're doing through our APARA system. So, and today I was out of the classroom doing some maths testing, still had my Chromebook next to me, and still caught a few kids that were not doing what they were supposed to be doing, and that, so. We're continuing to work on our, stay on task, and we have a big growth mindset push at Muslaun right now, so I just remind them, "Do you have a growth mindset? Do you want to learn this stuff? You have to be independent and stay on track, keep each other on track."
Do you think that holds their attention more than the traditional way, so you don't do the three groups?
When I have my small group, I get a lot more done, and obviously I can see right then and there. But I did try to get all three stations in, meet with all three groups at the beginning of the year for 20 minutes. They were just showing up, and then they needed to move on, and I said, "I think I have to do two per day," and that just means one group doesn't get to me, but we're still doing math, and.
But you do that every day? You do that every day?
I do that every day. So, I'm creating four. The Mobimax station is no lesson plan really, but the skill station and my teacher station, I'm creating lesson plans all the time for all the different groups I have.
So, what are your base problems? If you had too high or too low regarding the math, would you prefer it to be more time, less time, or the time that you have is appropriate using this method?
For the launch part? Oh, we could do that for 30 minutes, we could do that all hour, they wouldn't want that. But it's just to get us thinking about math, and to get us warmed up, and to get all the kids together. I was telling Katie the other day, their whole day is, "You're in that group, you're in that group, you're in that group." And I still like them to be one class sometimes. So, that's something we do all together, and yes, I could use more time if I did, but.
Do you find that when you have a small group, just with you, that more of the students are engaging with you?
They're learning too. They're learning that they can't hide. I'm like, "What do you think?" It's your turn to talk, it's your turn to talk. What instrument did you get? I usually let them turn and talk first, so they can build their confidence a little bit, without just saying, "Tell us what you have."
Do you see them working together?
Yeah.
Does that happen almost automatically with this model, or have they been attempted?
Yeah, they do, and you know, when I got my strugglers together, that's me guiding a lot. They can't help each other, nobody knows how to start sometimes, so we work together a lot more than the kids who love math, and will just take off with it, and then like. So, we talked at the beginning, they were math talk, it's not just, "Oh, yeah, that's good."
So, do you think they're going to teach different skills in this model than traditional?
Yes, and I think it's, I talked to Katie too, like, "What if I don't get as far as I should with some groups, but I'm really trying to build that foundation, kind of, so that's what they need." Some of them are, in their number sense, it's not like it's strong, you get to know the division, so.
What do you do if, you've got a little group that's too few, and then maybe they have a question that goes, "Do you want?"
Well, ask three for me is my motto, and typically, they can find somebody who answers their question, but in all the different little groups that we do, they pretty much know that.
Do they as well?
Yeah, but they know that they should not interrupt the teacher in the small group unless it's any emergency. It's one problem solved.
They're still moving forward.
Yeah, they should, they should. Yeah.
It seems to me that this is a lot more, I guess, dignity for someone that's not punctual or not high achieving, and sometimes, I guess, that is a major barrier, to move forward or for.
And asking for help.
Yeah, asking for help, so I like that.
Something on my teacher survey, the question is, "My teacher gives me help when I need it," and I had a lot of "sometimeses," and I was like, "Guys, you have to let me know when you need help, I don't read your mind." So, when you're sitting in that small group, that's the perfect time. So, we're working on this, you have to ask when you are confused, or need one more, one more problem, that's the time to do it.
Thank you.
All right, so I was just going to speak to how we're trying to reach students in that accelerated area as well, through this format. We have a student who was ready for sixth-grade math, and he, we're looking at kind of different ways to meet those needs. The needs and also the wants of the students are very important at this stage as well. So, not only do we want to meet those content needs and figure out what their new learning needs to be, but definitely also, how do we keep that student motivated and engaged through the process as well? So, we have a student right now who was advocating, he was at Webster for math, advocated that that wasn't feeling like the right fit for him. So, we sat down and said, "What can we do? How can we possibly use this format to meet his needs, but within the building?" So, we started with a student data review to make sure that the content, that sixth-grade content was absolutely what he needed at this point. That was verified, yes, it was. So, then a number of us had some, did some interest survey with the students. "What are your goals? What motivates you? Kind of what are your needs and your interests?" So, we can consider all of those things as we devise or revise your programming. So, through a very much.
So through a very much of a team effort, districts, really a K-12 approach, we engaged with the high school staff, thank you, with district staff, middle school staff and staff at Westlon, as well as the parents. And we get to the technical coordinator in our building as well and said, "What could we make, what could we craft for the students that would meet all of those wants and needs?" And so what we decided to do was craft a plan where the student would be back at Westlon. He participates in that launch with the class. And I did actually observe him in the launch session that you just went through, throwing out the answers, not always correct, but listening to other people's points of view, trying to explain thinking. It was very appropriate for him, as much as the other students in the class. And then he participates in the same rotation. He has his teacher new learning. We're just using, trying a vehicle called Alex Math for that. It is facilitated by teachers. Because with that new learning, you need to have somebody there to help with misunderstandings, clarify things right at the moment. His technology rotation is where we sort of, well, asked for some help from the high school and kind of crafted a coding rotation for his technology piece, which can actually have a path. So as he moves through this, there could be opportunities then in middle school to start engaging in some of those stem opportunities to perhaps start earning some high school credits at the middle school. So what we're doing with this student is we crafted a plan, we're working this plan. We're very much monitoring his progress and continuing to touch base with high school staff who's very trained, the middle school staff, parents, down to the Westlon staff to kind of monitor and make sure he's still growing, he's still engaged, but then also studying up extremely well for when he transitions to the middle school to get, again, everything he needs, content noise, but also meeting some of those wants. So that's just an example of what, one way we are working this format for a student who is in the margin, this part is very accelerated with his wants and needs.
Why wasn't he with the survey?
For him, it was a variety of things. The schedule, having basically a zero hour was difficult for him. He likes to sleep, he has activities. But also sort of camaraderie as friends. He liked starting his day in his classroom with his team of his peers. And just kind of, you know, he's very good at giving feedback. So he had a variety of reasons why he appreciated it, that he's enjoying it. And the parents have shared that, they're very pleased with going so far too.
Was, how involved were the parents in the whole process? In the student interest interview and the data and stuff like that?
They're very involved and in fact, one of the parents, when we were setting up sort of the coding rotation, actually arranged and took his child to a resource period at high school to kind of get fed up and make sure that...
So see, that's, so that we have someone in the margins like that that's part of the loop and...
Yes, very much so.
Katie, how many students would have this kind of attention?
We're actually kind of looking at data and figuring out. We even talked about that today. Sort of on a more global level, if this is working for one student, how many students are also in a similar spot for this need? It's going to be much more doable, I think, if you're able to use this format that is working and feasible at the school for a small group. That one individual right now who's getting attention, we try to do that for all of our students, just as the needs come up. But I see us being able to meet needs of other students similarly with this type of customized plan. It just might be more of a small group study, so that would be that rotation as opposed to maybe a rotation of one or two students.
I just got to say, I think it's awesome that you're using all the resources within our district. We've got great faculty throughout this type of district, so to get the parent, get the kids to meet their needs. I mean, I think this is absolutely awesome way to do it and, you know, just great use of our resources and our staff. I mean, just, that sounds awesome. Because it probably was scary for that kid to go over with those older kids. That was probably a big portion of it. And if you're not comfortable, you're not learning. So that's awesome.
So as you can see, we're always kind of crossing out the system, what we do differently. Really, it's about student ownership, what they're learning and having them be that driver of the instruction. And the teacher as the facilitator, kind of bringing the resources together. And so like Katie said, we actually met the elementary principal today. Kind of, you know, what are we doing? What can we do? What can we continue to grow as a group? And we spent about an hour and a half there to kind of just brainstorm, putting some stuff together. So we're all becoming, we're thinking about this kind of K-12, as Katie said, you know, this is almost great in terms of kind of stepping up, providing some things. We're continuing to look at what we can use the system to kind of expand every kid's learning and making sure that we're teaching those kids the basics. Kind of a personalized learning approach.
The technology or could the technology be able to do that if something wasn't a challenge? If we can move through something quickly, if we can kind of tell you guys, hey, this is too easy for this person, you need to move on?
Yeah, there are problems. I do that. Dreambox Learning is one of those. Alex is a little bit more linear. Teachers have to kind of set that up and drive that, but there are more sophisticated programs that you can purchase as well. That's kind of that more personalization. We don't have to be driving that. The kids can try send their skill.
So we could test that software out?
We've already been investigating it, kind of thinking about it in terms of how we incorporate that and things like it. There's a lot of them out there now that are becoming more intuitive and more analytic in terms of what kids are responding, how they're responding. So something we're taking closer looks at.
Katie, is this being applied at other schools other than Westlon?
It is. Our literacy collaborative is a workshop-based model as well. Workshop is not a new thing. A lot of districts do it, a lot of districts do it differently, some similar, some differently. But workshop is something a little bit later in terms of math because it's a very linear process. So some districts and teachers go a little bit more, takes a lot more to do and think about it a little bit differently. But it's one that we're looking at across the elementary in terms of, is this something we want to do? Is this meeting our kids' needs? Because it's not for everyone, it's not every district, so we're kind of looking at it just in terms of what to do with it right now. So all three are kind of part of you is doing it, courses consuming and showing it to teachers. It's something that we're all considering.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I really like how, I really like how the group kind of, how you guys are collaborating on all these things. You know, this whole example, you're collaborating with different technologies, partners, grades, schools, everything. It's just really a great example of how we...
This is really how this particular case, how it's able to pitch it right away, who did that kind of stuff and stepped up and made some responsibility and did it quickly.
Ten years prior, we had our kids, you know, that moved quicker and never quite knew what Webster wanted or needed. They go into their classes, when they get there, it's kind of foreign to us, but we have now collaboration with Webster. They're trying to give us the assessments. The kids need to be able to have all these skills in order to get to this class. So that's something now I'm throwing in into my group, so hopefully they can go on a little faster. And get to Webster, so that has helped a ton for our planning. It's not a mystery. Maybe the best, but we do. So it's, it's great for my plan.
Actually a great example of the schools just kind of close together. Thank you, Beth. Is there anyone from the board that would like to comment on anything? No one want to comment on anything at all? One wants to, twice. Sorry, anyone with any long recommendations?
Sure. We have a page and a half, two pages of recommendations. We're excited, we're pushing those recommendations, donations and... It also is on the backside. We're going to start off with this recommendation on the material that Alan and also speaks to some courses that he is asking the board to approve. And that's why we have a guest in our audience, many high school students here who are part of the board of the board that Alan is going to speak to.
So the curriculum committee, the board, here are these presentations and just, first of all, to let you know that there's a process in place in the district that was required. Any kind of innovation, it's just like when you heard, takes a bit of time before it ever makes it to the board table. So this is a year in the making and compliments to the high school. All these courses are really developed by high school teachers who really put a lot of thought into the individual students at the high school. And it's just an exciting example of how you're seeing innovation in the system with the workshop, with the course offerings. Really trying to be responsive to the students' needs. So the memo I put in there kind of segmented, most of the board members were present to hear these presentations, but for those that weren't. You've got three program modifications, I kind of just talked about, just some adjustments to the combined training health box state county last day of semester. Architectural drafting is really a course that was in the handbook a few years ago, bringing it back. And then some new course proposals, the AP research board heard about last year. Project lead, number two or three, the project lead, the way cybersecurity or the app development. Just to clarify on that, the project lead, the way you can go onto their website, that course is there, but it's appears to be really big viewing to schools in 2018. There's a potential pilot and if that pilot would go through for us, we'd want that course blown next year. So it was included in the board to see that.
No, just that it was exciting that when the teachers presented on all of them, that we're seeing a lot more additional AP classes. We're also seeing additional classes that they're getting college credit for, which is apparent, which you would have did sooner. It's all in college, according to these kind of classes. But the other thing is, kudos to, with our social studies, right? We now, if this one is approved, we'll have all of the available AP classes.
Yes.
And offered in our base school better available, which I thought was pretty impressive. I'm moved to approve.
In...
I would second.
Emotion is second, still more discussion. So the, so I see, you know, the whole candidate forces here and then I see project lead way, I see some engineering and so forth. Do you feel that our spaces are adequate for these type of programs? Do we need to look at any type of improvement down the road? I mean, are you seeing more interest in that engineering and things of that sort or is that under rearing?
That's a great question. So the consideration right now is, one of the goals this year is to look at the overall tech bed at the high school and the middle school and to see if the current level of interest, the programming needs, the facilities are meeting the needs of the students. There have been a lot of rapid changes in those fields and keeping up with the times and making adjustments to the physical plans is an important piece of that. So we certainly are aware of that. I do want to do a thorough study of just what's occurring and what we're trying to manage. Do our facilities currently meet the needs of students and what are students saying about the program?
Right. I see the increased interest in robotics and all these, you know, different things from a club and a classroom perspective. And we just talked about how we're collaborating just now. I think you're powerful here, you can do that, you know, if you've got a program as well, I know you guys are talking about that doing it. But it might mean at some point that we need to repurpose or update some of those spaces that we have now that aren't being used or those nice library rooms over at Webster or whatever it is. Like, you know, so you're doing it, that's great, that's what I'm interested in.
And building a ground has also looked at.
As we continue to lean into the new course offerings and new instructional practices, you heard a little bit about the workshop model that's being used tonight in the workshops and a lot of our workshops are designed traditionally, that's the rules and spaces set up. I mean, what you heard from the staff members, that she's using the space quite differently. Saw that in a picture, that's clearly a busy space. And so there's no question that we want to continue to look at our programs and needs of our teachers and more importantly, the needs of our students. And Chris, you did highlight a few courses, the project lead, the way engineering. So, you know, we look to and want to design an engineering component that starts on at the elementary level right through up to the high school. So what does that engineering focus look like at the elementary level? What kind of spaces are needed? Are they maker spaces? Are they more collaborative spaces? And I think that's a natural conversation to have as we push on these new course offerings. We push on teachers to try and explore new instructional practices. It's a logical conversation, actually parallel, the offerings of these courses. And I guess in some ways, you are giving the answer question. John's here, we've had similar conversation about our spaces. And Alan, Ted and Chris, we've had conversations a lot of the technology with our labs. We continue to need all those labs, as an example. I was looking at lab spaces at elementary and middle school. Can we repurpose that lab space to make it a bit more user-friendly? So there's large group areas to work, there's small group areas to work. And so John and I, the teaching and I, keep talking about facilities assessment based on our instructional learning needs. And we're having more of a conversation about that, starting to lean into that.
Yeah, I like that, you know, facilities discussions here are based on something that's repaired or falling apart or needing to be replaced. But boy, how can we repurpose this space so that kids can have a better learning experience? It's really refreshing. It's driven by freedom, you know, and nothing else. It's a really great place to be.
And some changing dynamics too. I mean, if you look at it, the number of young ladies that are on that robotics team and that are, you know, going into these classes. And I heard that across all the teacher presentations on those, that, you know, Mr. Collins said, you know, like you're getting more ladies in some of those classes and that's happening. We're starting to look at those other avenues and different career choices, so that's kind of exciting.
Thanks.
No, we got a motion on that. Ball in favor?
Thank you, Alan. How are you working? The teachers, thank you for doing, thank you for all your work. Appreciate that forward meaning that I use a trade off initiative team. It's courage over comfort and I like the fact that you have the courage to pull some things and continue to be forward. Thank you.
And on behalf of the committee, curriculum committee, thank you to all of you for your presentations. And it also makes it very easy when you guys come in and already have all the answers to our questions because you guys have it all found out ahead of time, which is, makes a lot less work for us. We appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd like to add to that because I was in the meeting as well and it was just really helpful to go through and see where it's coming from or doing it. And appreciate your patience in answering our questions. It's something we do every day, so it's good. It's, we appreciate you.
I add to that. I really enjoyed that meeting, that community meeting because you see all the effort that staff put into this. You know, you've thought about this for a long time, you've conceded, you've thought about it, how we can make it better. And it's really enjoyable to see somebody pushing the envelope, saying, "Well, this is a new class and we should change our class this way." I give you lots of leeway to do that. Me personally, I like that. And I really enjoy seeing that evolve and how you explain the new courses that you wanted to offer. And obviously the board supports that fully too, so nice to give it to you.
All right, we're moving to donations now. So I'd be, congratulations, Brianna Phillips, CSD alumni who has been selected to receive 2016 G-Star Award. Brianna nominated Seaboard High School to receive an accompanying award, the financial award of $500 from GE Foundation. The donation is to use at Seaboard High School for 2016-17.
Ball in favor? Yes, motion carries.
I recommend the board take action regarding the donation of $1,000,000 from Fine Arts Boosters. This donation is to use by Seaboard High School's art department, dance department, vocal music department at $500 each for the 16-17 school year.
In favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Do we need to make a motion though? I think we need someone to make a motion in second to be a good representative. So I'll make a motion to approve both B and C. So it's a second, I don't think I'm out here.
I'll second it. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Excited to make a motion that the board take action regarding...
Excited to make a motion that the board take action regarding the donation of $635 from the Lake District Nooks Baseball Organization. This donation is to use purchased in Mobile P Board to be used by Westside Elementary School for Music Department.
Will it approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Motion carries.
Excited, I propose the board take action regarding the grant donation of $1,027 from Webster PTO. This donation is to use to purchase a new choir, older cabinet to use at Webster.
Will it approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Excited, I recommend the board take action regarding the grant donation of $840 from Webster PTO. This donation is to cover the cost of buses to and from Wisconsin Dells for eighth grade band trip to the band festival.
Will it approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Excited, my recommendation, board take action regarding the grant donation of $794.89 from Webster PTO. This donation is to cover the cost of additional label supplies in order to expand the label team to include six graders.
Will it approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Excited, I recommend we'll take action regarding the grant donation of $719.18 from the CHS PTO. This donation is to cover the cost of portable sound system and case abused by CHS Core Programming.
Will it approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excited, I recommend the board take action regarding the grant donation of $2,193.36 from CHS PTO. This donation is to cover the cost of 10 robotics kits to be used by CHS Mathematics Computer Science Department.
Will it approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Excited, I recommend the board take action regarding the grant donation of $1,000 for CHS PTO, excuse me, from the CHS PTO. This donation is to cover the cost of a drone, DJI, Phantom, four, five zero copter with extra propellers, battery and that, that is to be used by CHS.
Will it approve?
Second.
I don't want to shoot it out of the air.
Besides, it has our precious drone as part of the school mission, that's nice. So that concludes all the donations, just a kind of thank you to all the PTO, KTA, different organizations that continue to support the mission of Seaboard High School, pretty outstanding.
Did anybody total those by any chance? I saw some, I didn't know. I'd say we recommended.
We generally do bring a total to the board a couple of times, but we'll do that next time. We need to generate, absolutely. And we have those certain donations, it really does confirm the fact that we're on the right trajectory, we're doing the right work because if there were no donations, people are not going to support the program, what we see is a lot of support. The next item, I'm going to refer to Chad, to regarding the workforce 2020 agreement.
I'll ask the board to approve the 60301 agreement with our Rosaki County partnerships for our youth entrepreneurship programs and continuing program, it's not for longer years and it's just starting to update that agreement with the other districts.
Will it approve?
Second.
Either way. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Motion carries.
The next item, the item we've all been waiting for, our announcement addressed to the 16-17 tax, like certification and budget amendments.
Yep, so we're looking at my setting final tax levy for 16-17 and then adjusting the budget as needed based on the variables that came in over the past month. If you remember last month, we had the budget hearing where we approved the preliminary budget for 16-17, but now that news, data's coming from the state and enrollment data's coming, we have some adjustments that need to be, the budget that needs to be set for 16-17. You have a couple of attachments that are linked with the agenda. One of them looks at the budget adoption amendments that are made, that are going to be proposed, and then one of them looks at the tax levy scenarios for 16-17. So the first item on there, looking at the 16-17 budget, it's the title of budget adoption 16-17 revised.
Do you know what page that is in there?
Uh, I do not.
The budget amendment?
Yeah.
It's in, I can actually bring it up.
Clearly. So basically what this sheet goes through is, it looks through our audit information for the last couple of years and then the budget pool for 16-17. There was another column added for a revised budget that we're proposing for this meeting and that's the fourth column in there. And the fifth column, breaks down the variance from what was the budget hearing to what we're looking at this time around. Lot of different things, lot of moving parts, like I said, main factors that will influence that will be enrollments, which we do in the middle of September, state, which is certified in the middle of October, and then property values, which should be at early, early October. So now that we have all those pieces in place, we're able to make some budget pools and kind of reassess where we're at right now. The good news is that our budget's more favorable, I would say, compared to where it was last month for the budgetary. Our enrollment's on the rise, our 4K is higher than what we're projecting initially or budgeting for initially, but in addition to that, our resident enrollment is up. So we have about 10 more students living in the district than were last year and their open enrollment's up as well. So all those factors add additional revenue to the district that can be used to offset different expenses. In addition to that, we're also getting approvals for approvals for grants that we applied for. Alan applied for a 4K grants that was approved for this year and next year. So on the revised sheet, you can see towards the bottom, major budget adjustments, that happens in there and that's just over $94,000 until we got to fund our 4K program, which is good because initially we were anticipating using part of our fund balance to fund that certain cost, so that helps offset it. Towards the end of the sheets, you'll kind of see a final summary, which breaks it down kind of this revenue over expenditures for each fund. As you can see, fund times in the negative, but that's attributed to the fund balance we're using this year for the tennis courts and LED projects. Without that, we have a balanced budget as proposed. And the other funds, they kind of fluctuate, but they all kind of have their own restrictions required. And then right below that, there's a breakdown on major budget adjustments, kind of like the big items that we're able to see from last month and this month that we're able to make changes on. Additional revenue, additional expenses, sort of those ways. Another factor that came in more specifically, we'll mention that in a nice couple of agenda items, is our benefit variables. Originally, we're budgeting for down to about 5%. Health came in at 0% and dental came in at 4%.
You say that.
What's that?
Say the health.
Health was, came in at 0%, so.
Better than allowance here.
So it's a very favorable position to be in. I'm used to seeing other districts that typically get initial rates at 12% increase to double digits, so it could work with, initially we got 3%. It was a 3%. That gives, this is a lot of flexibility to do with, to move that money in different areas, especially for.
But same, the same carrier we have this year?
Yep, same carriers as well. So that's kind of the budget overview. Looking at the tax levy, that's the one that says 16-17 tax levy scenarios. The P and F committee looked at these different scenarios and really the difference between them is really just a fluctuation of how we use Fund 39 levy for that. Beyond that, the, all the other items are equal or the same. P and S is recommending that we go with scenario one. It's the most similar to what we have last year for our tax levy. It would result in a decrease in the bill rate of about 30 cents or about a 3% decrease for the tax impact. On a home that's at, that's valued at about $300,000, this would save about $89 per year on taxes, so that's also good news. The one piece that was new this year is that we had some levy for private school vouchers that are in our district. We had two and a half FTE students. We don't know what school they're going to or what students they're specifically, we just get that information straight from the state. That's just kind of a new wrinkle that was added to our revenue limit. It's not a huge impact, it's just $18,000. It's just another piece of the budget that impacts our tax levy a little bit. And like I said, the other scenario is just look at utilizing Fund 39 either more heavily or less heavily than we have in the past. Really the benefit of having that Fund 39 balance is to give us stability in the future in case we have a, you know, tax bump, we're able to use that fund balance to kind of stabilize the levy and keep it pretty consistent regardless of the past, so.
Is there a time, we need to wait for them using that, is there? Do you need to wait a certain number of years in order to use that?
Uh, the main purpose for it is refinancing debt, so we have to use it to pay off the debt. So if we don't have that, we have to make sure we use it to take care of any remaining debt we have, so.
So then your recommendation is scenario one as well?
Yep.
And we're asking the board to take action on that tax levy or, let's see, the board to take action regarding the tax allocation.
Do you want to review that for the static? We should read it.
Yep.
I'd make the recommendation to approve the scenario one. That's all I have.
Second that. Motion second, need further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question. Maybe it's something that was covered at the P and F, I left it there. But on the major budget adjustments, the additional items, there's $100,000 for security cameras and then some other items on there. Are those part of this that you're looking for approval, for improvement, are first approved now? It's not, right? Because we talked about some of these things, right?
Yeah, the bigger items on there, we come back to you guys for official approval for the salary adjustments or major equipment and whatnot. Those would be other items we'd come back and have agenda items for. Really what we're doing now is earmarking on the budget, so we have a budget settled for them.
Okay, so if we, that's, there'll be a recommendation that we would approve later, the major budget adjustments.
Right.
But this one's just a placeholder, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can kind of visualize what it looks like. Okay.
This is another discussion that you left.
Yeah, sorry, it's kind of faster.
Sorry, I have to leave for a little bit.
We also thought about the CPAC and how many lawyers that could, who you pay and the interest rate of that and what the payment is, we can all back and how we look at that. Should we continue to improve with that and some specific findings?
I just wanted to be sure that, that, yeah.
Yeah.
We have to hold these one.
Well, I have to, we were there quite a while.
So just to, just to clarify then, then, the items that are on page, at the end of page two, on the budget adjustments, that are in red, are things that will still come before the board to be approved.
Yep. We have a lot of pools for those and trades the board, so there's a board discussion. So as of right now, we just want to make sure we count for those in the budget. So we're kind of earmarking during this year.
I just have, just a question or a comment. I think it's important for those watching this line that we talked about the LED project because we're saying we're going negative because of that, but that's going to be a positive turnaround in our savings, for our energy savings. What was the turnaround on that?
4.78 years.
So under five years, we'll pay for all that, just our savings on our electricals?
Right.
And the tennis courts being something that was out of our control when another government group decided not to pay their funding for that?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted everyone in the public to know that.
And with this proposal too, we're adding, we're using a little bit less of fund balance than we originally proposed at the budgetary last month. So if you look at that bottom total, that plus $200,000, that's much less we're going to be using for fund balance. Originally, that was earmarked for 4K and so now that would be less than that, but it's a good.
I just, I don't want the public thinking that we're just out spending some fund balance on things that we don't need to. There's a reason for these being done that way because we don't normally see a negative and take that much from fund balance, but.
What was the monthly on that kind of score?
430.
430. And then what's the life cycle on those LEDs?
60,000 hours, which is 20 plus years. Before you, before you even get into degradation, that's what the industry standard is.
Yeah.
They say in excess of 100,000 hours, so we're looking 25, 30 years before we reach.
Yeah, the annual savings was about, what was it?
About 200 and some thousand for sure.
So we're going to save $200,000 a year on electricity and those blobs are going to go for probably 25 years.
Right.
Just note, so that savings we had talked about earmarking at those facilities, it makes sense that those are savings that we essentially put in Fund 46, which is a fund that would be used to address facility issues, long-term, short-term maintenance issues.
I just, people do watch this and I don't want us to brush over something that big dollar amount without them realizing, you know, the strategic reasons why it happened or the reason that someone else just walked over to the table and didn't take care of it.
And I would add to that, that a lot of the, the work that goes into these numbers and the committee meetings, not here on this, on this venue, so if anyone wants to kind of see how things put together, that's, that's where you would, where you put up with that.
Actually, I compliment this to your standpoint, I mean, Ben, the whole game, it's been a very creative budget process along with which is needed because of all the changes and lots of changes during the course of years, so this is Ben's first budget with us, who were definitely some creative surprises to put into it. Lots of trust, so thank you.
Yeah, it's refreshing to have suggestions and to really strengthen and improve the process ones in the budget timeline, in terms of the evaluation we have in the question process.
So it's been a while, those motions to.
To approve as presented and that's of understanding that the edits and drafts won't be discussed and are not being stolen or approved.
Anyway, scenario one.
Scenario one.
Scenario one. Correct. Need more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Motion carries, yeah, it's like, it's officially time to start another next budget. All right, Ben, you're up again.
Well, the next item, we look at our temporary cash flow borrowing. We've done this for the last couple of years, last year for $2 million from kind of early November to late March. Districts will typically do this just because of the way that revenue comes in from the state and from local taxes. We have a pretty consistent expenditure flow of payroll every two weeks, but revenue will come in large chunks typically in our March, early fall. So that's good for that time, but at the same time, right around November to March, we get these laws of where we have to make sure we're covering cash flow from month to month. So that's, that is what the cash flow borrowing proposal is. We're looking to temporary around of 1.28 million. That would cover our costs from early November to late March. We put out the bid last week, we only had one bid proposal, it was from Bear Financial and they put in a pretty aggressive or pretty consistent market average for the interest rate, just over 1% for that, so it will be just over 7,000 interest over the life of the borrow. But like I said, it's pretty much to maintain our cash flow over the couple of months that we have, so.
You need a motion?
I'm opposed to approve. Second.
Motion second, for their discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Ben?
Like I said before, health insurance, getting payable. Initially, we were budgeting 5% increase. Carrier came back with a 3% proposal and went back and forth a little bit and got to kind of the zero, 0%, so stable, no change. So it led to some savings in terms of what we're originally budgeting for this year. The good news is that deductions for staff won't change at all, the plan won't change at all, so pretty stable for 2017, so.
Same carrier, same code, same docs.
Yep, yeah, really the only things, only thing that will be changing this year is that we'll be introducing a wellness assessment that we'll be putting out to staff in a couple of weeks, really just to get, give that biometric information to look at any kind of, you know, preventative or preventative type issues they might have, so it's really kind of trying to address those issues. Our health insurance carrier is being bought at 100%, so it should help just raise awareness for different issues that might happen. Uh, our health insurance carrier is being more at twenty than a hundred percent, so, um, it should help, um, just raise awareness for different issues they might have, so.
Five percent representative damage.
Um, that is roughly about eighty-five thousand.
Those health assessments mandatory for everybody?
They're voluntary, um, but what will happen is that, um, staff who do not participate will pay a little bit more in the premiums, um, or pay checks, so.
So it's not really voluntary, but. He had this conversation, right?
Maybe, maybe the right comment is. Well, did you say multiple surprise stories? Probably the good news, some insurance increase, I don't check my set, probably.
I'd say it's upstanding.
Absolutely.
We, we all know in our industries what it's going for. And have a zero increase for the district and employees, that's just unreal. I also have to say that we gave a great decision a few years ago with health, health insurance changes and changes in, uh, agents involved, so.
Right, that's a very good.
They've made great progress. My, my past experience and what I've seen, kind of, the area I came from and Dave told me was the annual conversation of, okay, our rate increases eight percent, twelve percent. What do we need to do to either increase employee contributions or change the plan to make it more affordable? So avoiding that conversation here is, is definitely a plus.
We need a motion? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Uh, that's all, kind of the same vote, um, that one's increasing by four percent. Um, since it's a smaller, uh, premium for dental, uh, there's less of an impact. Uh, we were budgeting five percent increase, so that one percent does give us a little bit of savings, just over a thousand. Um, that, the four percent, uh, we will do with the goal, that's what we're proposing, so same plan, same providers, um, two thousand and sixteen, so.
Great.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, and Ben, to the last one.
Yeah, last one. Um, so we do own some property off of Bridge Road, um, and each year we put out the lease to, uh, markers to, um, grow on. Uh, it's about twenty acres, and if you go onto your packet, there's kind of a description of where exactly it is. Um, this year, we put it out to bid, uh, and we got two bids. The highest bidder was, uh, let's see, from last year, Mike Zibbers. Uh, he put in a bid for sixty-four dollars per acre, which is about twelve hundred dollars, uh, for the year. Uh, the plan is, just talking over with the PNF, we is to put out a bid again next year, um, just to see if we can get more aggressive bids and whatnot, because the sixty-four dollars per acre is a little bit lower than what we had last year. Um, but overall, it's a smaller amount, um, so we were recommending that we accept that bid, so.
Motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. All right. Ted?
Um, we have a group of policies that need to be approved tonight, and I like to take this, this opportunity to thank our three board members that sit on this committee. It's not the most exciting work, but it's, it's important work, so these are really choose your career, it's a rule in terms of patience and hard work in getting these policies through to where we are right now. Uh, these policies got approved, these are just the updates from Neola that need to get done and, uh, to our, our website soon. So once we get some approval, get those up there. So, um, that being said, I'll just kind of put it out there, the policies that are in queue, all we approve, there are many. Uh, we had, uh, some that need to come through yet, we'll do that with our next group, ten that didn't get through this time. So we're asking that we wait for the first reading, vote as soon as we can.
And the committee has reviewed them thoroughly, uh, just ten more to come. The reason for the ask of not having two readings on it is Neola's going to soon be giving us the next ones, and we don't want to be one behind. We want the current ones that they're making changes, not the previous. Um, it's going to make it a lot easier for staff, it's already a big pain to do, so I'll move to approve.
Is that it?
Yeah, we're good.
And then, like, you were careful, and all three of you agree on this, and all three of you agree on waiting on the first reading?
Correct, yeah, we went through the language of each and every.
We went through every.
We, we have ten that you have not seen yet that will be coming later.
Great.
And one that we weren't unanimously signed, so that went to attorney for review. Um, so you'll be seeing ten more coming, but we want to get these done beforehand.
And motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, thanks for all your work that you guys have been up to, kind of working. Thank you for staff's work on this as well. And with this, but very necessary. All right, so moving on to curriculum committee, and we can talk about a lot of stuff right here, is in the ad.
Now, we're just, we cover a lot of, you excited classes, a few other things, but not here apart.
So communications?
Yes, we did have a communications meeting, and, uh, in addition to the Todd's discussion earlier regarding the, uh, surveying, uh, we also discussed, uh, uh, the creation of alumni association and building off of the terrific foundation, uh, that we have from the Golden Bulldogs organization. And the thought here is to create a, uh, a large group that would include administrators, current students, past students, teachers, parents, board members, whatever, in the community. Uh, with the idea of creating a, um, an ongoing support network, uh, not only for, uh, creating fundraising opportunities, but more importantly, to give our students an opportunity to network with people in the community who have been associated with Cedarburg High School in the past in ways of, uh, career guidance and efforts to, uh, give them, uh, thoughts regarding, uh, their schools, uh, that they're interested in attending, uh, colleges, whatever, um, and a whole host of other things. And we discussed, uh, at some length, uh, uh, thoughts about this and, um, uh, also a, uh, timeline between now and the end of, uh, the school year, June. And we'll be back to talk with the board more about that later. We also, uh, somewhat connected with this, uh, discussed, uh, the desire to start to create a marketing plan for the district, uh, and particularly, uh, for the high school. Uh, it is becoming interesting as, uh, we see various school systems, various private schools, uh, reaching out, uh, and, uh, attempting to promote their organizations to our parents and to our students. And, uh, it is a strong feeling on the part of, uh, the district's administrative team, uh, and as well, I think, the communications committee, uh, that we need to develop, uh, alternative strategies, uh, that get our message out there in competition with, uh, some of these other districts. Uh, we recently, one of our board members recently received a, uh, a letter, uh, from a very well-known private school in this, uh, general community. Had basically, uh, notwithstanding the fact that this, uh, member, uh, this person's family, uh, the husband of this family, uh, is a member of our board, uh, was promoting that they really ought to take a look at sending their kids to this school. If this is the, what we are up against as a, uh, high-performing school district, then I think we need to also take, uh, action to get our message out there. And that's what the communications will be doing over the coming weeks.
Todd, is there anything else that I've missed here?
We covered, that's it, girl, thank you.
Thank you, that's great. I'll see.
Just real quick, for anybody that didn't notice, about eighty that you approved tonight. Uh, so when the new updates come, uh, feel welcome to anyone on the board who would like to join us as we review the next hundred or so. We'll be glad to have you come to our meeting. Uh, but we, on behalf of the entire committee, do want to thank staff. Um, this time through it, uh, we did a lot of less changes, we made a lot of changes originally, but staff did a lot of heavy lifting on this to make sure that they knew what we wanted and they got in front of us and we were able to quickly go through a lot of them, so just on behalf of the committee, thank you to staff for all the hard work.
Absolutely. I, I compliment you, because when you open this, you melt three hundred fifty-five pages of stuff.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of things in there that you guys managed to go through with painstakingly, which is great, but I appreciate you doing that, because, um, it is a big success.
Yeah. I compliment you too, I was told there was one meeting a month about an hour or two long, and then I got three hundred fifty-five.
Tell you about that.
We're very thankful. They didn't tell you that, we read those out before that, Joe, right?
Thank you. So now it's probably time to tell Raven that he's the new newest member that can.
And, and I can say from our changes we make, we read every word of that, because we were Smith a lot, and it's interesting that Neola now has adopted some of our changes in the area, so we must be okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think what, I think what Ben's project for next year is to investigate whether we can send Neola bill.
All right, that's all.
Jeff, can you, is there any committee that you covered?
One committee I covered, but it's, uh, the revised is we went through the OCA one more time. Um, we're not back in staff's hands, but I would say probably early November, we would like to have the board do it and move on it. So we're just narrowing the focus on it right now.
Can you see what this is for, in my piece?
Let's see. Okay, that's all future life of this. What we're looking at is, who's lazy and how do we want to set it up? And how do we want to look at reducing future life of these, we're talking about the next twenty years, next thirty years. Um, we're looking at maybe ten to twelve hundred dollars. So we're looking at, we're setting up future boards, so that they don't have to be considered, or do it right now. Um, it's just restructuring, or we're, some of the, the pieces.
Yeah, it's actually, it's, it's incredible to sit through and look at the math behind this, you make very subtle changes. You could literally say billions and millions of dollars, many billions of dollars over a twenty-year period. And they're subtle changes that I think, you know, really is important, should look at very seriously, because it's not today, it doesn't help us, but it helps the district. Ten, or even five years, but ten and twenty years down the road, it's millions of dollars to save.
And some of it is realized throughout the life, because you're, you're not taking money out of the budget to fund these projects. So there, there is an immediate benefit as well.
It's just good fiscal management compared to what the, prior to the whole country is going to go through.
Here. All right, we're looking forward to that. All right, Ben for the PNF?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we will turn into executive session, where it's anticipated that we will approve executive session minutes from September twenty-first. Insert support staff employees performance evaluation compensation rules nineteen eighty-five one C and E. Insert compensation of former employee who was governed by the federal jurisdictionary statute of liability nineteen point eight five one C. And then we will adjourn into open session, where we may talk about support staff employees compensation for sixteen seventeen, and we'll take that motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll move to adjourn to executive session.
Second?
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, and thank you, everyone. Thanks, everybody, and.